Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Selagi.
Here.
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 Carlin.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are fortunate to have two students from the Shapiro STEM Academy, Hadley Virgin and Beckett Virgin to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. So would you two please come forward?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take this opportunity to thank both of you for coming this evening. The reason that we're here is because of students and we put students first. That's our guiding principle. And so we wanted to recognize the time that you took to spend here and bring mom and dad out this evening. So Beckett, there's a certificate for you. Thank you very much. And Hadley, we have a certificate for you as well. Thank you so much for coming and spending time with us. Now, you're welcome to stay, but if you have other important things to do like homework or go out and play, we understand. You can't stay for a whole night, but we do really appreciate your coming. It helps us to remember why we're here and that's because of students. So thank you so much. Thanks a lot. All right, moving on, the next item of business is land acknowledgement, which seems especially poignant this week, given that Monday was not only Columbus Day, but Indigenous Peoples' Day. So with that, I'll turn that over to Dr. Davis.
Yes, just to recognize our land acknowledgement, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the whole chunk of Monomity people who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge that these indigenous communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and the opportunity to share stewardship on these lands.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we have approval of agenda. Is there any board member who would wish to move anything as noted in terms of the placement on the agenda?
No.
I don't see any. We could either do this by a motion and a second, or we can do it by acclamation.
I move to approve.
All right, then we need a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to accept the order of the agenda as printed. Would you please call the roll?
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Karin.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Then, moving on, we have board and administrative reports, beginning with the board president's report. As was noted at our regular meeting in September, on the, I believe it was the 28th of September, Bob Peschall found it necessary to resign from the board and his position as board president because he had accepted a position that didn't allow for his continuing on this board or on the county board. And so I know there've been some, there's been some interest in the community in terms of what does that mean? So I'd like to talk about filling the vacant board position and read this following statement, or paraphrase it at least. "The Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education is seeking applications from eligible residents to fill a vacancy on the board due to the resignation of Board President Bob Peschall. The board will appoint an eligible resident to fill Mr. Peschall's term, which expires in April of 2023 per Board Policy 0171.2. The vice president as board president, excuse me, the vice president as board vice president will move to that position and serve as president for the remainder of Mr. Peschall's term." So in other words, we are not filling the position of president, we are filling a single term to continue until April of this year. And we will be voting for a new vice president this evening to fill that position, since that is the vacant board leadership role at this time. Interested applicants for the board position must submit a notice of their interest addressing qualifications in writing by 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 27th, 2022. Application material should be marked to my attention, that is, Barb Herzog as board president, and can be either hand-delivered to the Oshkosh Area School District Administration Office, or can be emailed to me at the email address on the district website. During the week of October 31st, a special board meeting will be held to interview candidates, review applications, and appoint a new board member. This will be a public meeting. The new board member will begin attending board meetings in November. I truly encourage eligible residents to consider this position and to learn more about board member responsibilities and time commitments by visiting the district's website and the Board Elections Camp page. On the district's website, there is information on board policies. The first section within the policies section is labeled "Bylaws," and that pretty much describes the role of the board and expectations and other requirements. So that would be another good area to review. According to the Wisconsin Elections Commission, an eligible candidate must, A, be a citizen of the United States, B, be 18 years of age or older, and C, a resident of the school district for at least 28 consecutive days at the time of filing a declaration of candidacy. The appointed candidate will serve until the next regular election, which is April in 2023. If the individual appointed to serve this year wishes to continue serving on the board, they must file in January 2023 to be a candidate in the April 2023 Board of Education election. That would involve beginning on December 1st of this year, gathering signatures on petitions to run, and that requires at least 100 signatures in order to run. So if you have any questions, you can contact me, or you can contact Dr. Davis, and we would be happy to talk with you about the vacancy. Okay, we also have this evening our retirement. It has been our practice for several years to recognize those individuals who are retiring from a position in the school district. We had done this during the time when we considered resolutions at the end of the meeting, and we decided earlier this year to move that up to the beginning of the meeting, so that if someone didn't want to stay until later in the meeting, they could be recognized earlier and wouldn't necessarily have to stay tuned in or be present for the entire meeting. So at this time, I would like to recognize a long-serving custodian in our district. Stephen Abler is retiring as a building custodian from West High School. He has served the district since 1992, so in other words, he's retiring with 30 years of service to our district, and we would certainly like to wish him a long, happy, and healthy retirement as he enters a new age and stage of life. We will formally be voting on that at the time of the meeting when we consider resolutions, which will be toward the end of the meeting. So that's why we placed that at the beginning today. Now, moving on, we will hear from Dr. Davis for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I'll kick it over to our student reps, who are here tonight to give us an update on the exciting things going on at our high schools. So we'll start with Owen tonight.
Okay, good evening. As you said, my name is Owen, and I'm happy to be here to represent Oshkosh North High School. So I am here following our homecoming week, which took place last week. So as you can see, our dance was themed Hollywood this year, so there's some of the decorations right before the dance. And then, we had an amazing spirit week this week. We had five different days, Breakfast Club, Wild West, The Parent Trap, Hollywood, and Hometown Roots. They're kind of the most anticipated part of homecoming week that everyone loves to participate in. So earlier in the week, on Thursday last week, we held our annual retiree lunch. So this is an event that our student council loves to put on every year to welcome back old staff members who we talked with from our North Star and our student council, and it's a great way to reconnect with those who used to work at North. The next day was kind of our biggest day of the week, Friday. So to kick off the events on Friday, right after school, we started our pep rally. So we had musical chairs, our male palms, and our staff palms, along with our homecoming court announcements. So as you can see in the top corner, there's a few of our male palms, and then right below, some of our staff palms, along with our new Sparty costume for our mascot. So the pep rally was a success. For our court this year, we did have a few changes. Instead of our typical team and queen, we aligned our court more with the theme, and we did two VIP seniors. It was a great success, and the students really loved it. Right after our pep rally, student organizations, along with anyone in the public, was invited to go to Roosevelt Elementary School, where our parade started. So our organizations and clubs are welcome to create a float and participate in kind of a competition, and then students hand out candy for the public. So it's a great success. We have, as you can see, a few organizations. There's a float right there and right there, and then a few of our student unions right up there.
Just a quick question, excuse me, Owen, are you in that top?
I am. Yeah, that's me. And yeah. And then, as you can see, that's our antique fire truck with Sparty on it. The parade led right to Titan Stadium, where we had our tailgate, which is sponsored by Verve. So there's food and games for the students, and then that led right into our football game, which was blackout-themed against our rivalry, Oshkosh-West. Thankfully, we won for our homecoming game, so it was a great night. Right away the next morning, a lot of our student council members got up early and got ready to prepare the dance for the night. So whether it be blowing up balloons, or putting up Hollywood signs throughout the school, we had a great committee this year that put together an amazing dance for the night. So beyond our homecoming festivities, we've also had a few other events throughout the last month since I've been here. So our music department has been pretty active recently. So as you can see in the top right, our Oshkosh North Band hosted a halftime show at the homecoming game, featuring the song "Thriller." And then, our music department is participating in a center stage program through the PAC this year. So a few students got a tour of the PAC backstage, so that's the view. And then, our ONHS choirs took a trip to UW Milwaukee for a tenor-based festival. Along with that, our North Star, which is our school newspaper, has gained a lot of traction and has also built a bigger group this year. So the school newspaper is working hard to interview students and teachers throughout the school on multiple platforms, whether it be social media or through their website. So there's a lot of cool interviews and articles coming in the next months. And then, some additional things that are going on. Along with West, we also got new TVs in our library, hallways, and cafeteria. Our sports seasons are concluding. They were really busy in September, and now they're coming to a close. So our swim team and our volleyball team recently had senior nights, and then the football team, the soccer team, and the cross-country team have sectionals approaching in the coming weeks. Along with that, our choir concert, the first one of the year, is next Thursday. If you've been around Oshkosh North recently, you've probably seen our new turf field that was installed this summer. It's really increased attendance at our games. It draws in big crowds. And then, just recently, new bleachers were installed facing the other way towards our track. Today, the juniors took the PSAT as they move into testing season next semester. And then, our feminist student union at Oshkosh North has also grown its involvement and is working on a lot of great causes throughout our school. And lastly, our state society is putting together a play by our new director, Mr. Green.
Thank you very much, Owen. Excellent job.
All right, Tessa. Keep us updated on what's going on at Oshkosh-West.
Okay, so like you said, I'm Tessa, and I'm here on behalf of Oshkosh-West, and I'm going to tell you what's up with the Wildcats. So Oshkosh-West, two weeks ago, had our homecoming week. Our theme this year was neon and glow-in-the-dark. So throughout the week, we hosted a variety of events. We had our annual hallway decorating, which was a competition between the grade levels, and our freshmen won this year. Then, throughout the week, we also had activities such as Minute to Win It Games, a scavenger hunt, and most popular, Iron Man volleyball and Powder Puff football. Iron Man volleyball was won by the senior team, and Powder Puff football was won by the junior team. And then, on Friday, we had our pep rally. Our dance team and football team put together a routine, which was very entertaining to watch. And we had a other, a big variety of other games, putting grade levels and teachers against each other. That was a lot of fun. Then our football game, we had against Appleton North. The theme was Wild West, and we had a really good turnout. It was a lot of fun. In sports news, our boys varsity soccer team won at conference, and the tennis duo's team, or doubles team of Keegan Potter and Kate Conger are headed to state. Also notably, our girls swim team, cross-country team, and girls volleyball team have been doing very well. This year, Oshkosh-West is pleased to host four international students. Their names are Gaia and Agnese, who are from Italy, Nida, who's from Brazil, and Redmi, who's from Uzbekistan. And speaking of new Wildcats, Oshkosh-West just welcomed a brand-new therapy dog. Her name is Luna, and she will join our team of two other therapy dogs, Atlantis, who was new this year, and Quill, who joined us last year. Our school newspaper, the Oshkosh-West Index, just put out their first issue. This issue features stories about community events, sports teams, and a spread all about summer travels. All of our writers and editors worked very hard, and you can check out all of the articles and more on their website. This year, Oshkosh-West musical is going to be SpongeBob, and they just held musical auditions this week and last week. There will be public performances January 26th through January 29th. And finally, during our homecoming week, Oshkosh-West also participated in a food drive. I don't have the exact total of how much we collected, but it's in that picture there, and it was quite a bit. And then tomorrow, Oshkosh-West is hosting a voter registration event. We teamed up with some women from the League of Women's Voters, and we will be helping students who are 18 and older get registered to vote.
All right, thank you both so much for
Thank you.
For your presentations. For tonight's superintendent's good news report, a busy time this time of year throughout the district. So first of all, Oshkosh North football players, band members, and student council members and choir members recently visited Reed Elementary for a homecoming-themed Rocket Rally. It was a great way for the elementary students to learn about homecoming and what it means. North students greeted the kids with a high-five tunnel into the gym while the band was playing, and then the choir sang the National Anthem. Elementary students were able to hear from the high school students and watch them compete for some Minute to Win It games. The school also recognized former Reed Rockets that are now North Spartans. So it was lots of fun at that activity. So thanks for everybody that participated in that. Franklin Elementary School staff recently enjoyed some friendly competition for a good cause at the Spellbound for Literacy, an annual fundraiser for the Winnebago Area Literacy Council. It's great to see staff engaged and making a difference in our community. Additionally, Franklin students recently had an exciting time learning about water safety and sailing, thanks to the International Youth Sailing of Oshkosh. Roosevelt 4th and 5th graders enjoyed a unique art project. They were tasked with creating a t-shirt design that represents their school community. The top designs were voted on by staff, and the winning design was adopted, was adapted into a graphic to be used for school spirit wear. Congratulations and great job to all those talented student artists. Almost 50 of our students with special needs recently participated in a job fair hosted by Lakeland Care District. Students were able to engage with local employers, learn about career opportunities, and could even get a professional haircut onsite if needed. As an additional bonus, the Brewing Futures Mobile Cafe was also onsite, serving attendees and helping everyone see the skills and value that students of all abilities bring to our community. Carl Treger Elementary recently partnered with Safe Rowes Schools to offer zone safety, school zone safety education to students. Kindergarteners through 3rd graders learned about different types of pedestrian signs and crosswalks, and what rules cars have to follow. 4th and 5th graders also learned about school zone safety and participated in Project Radar. Students used radar guns to collect data on the speeds of passing vehicles on 20th Avenue. They then walked to a pedestrian crossing area to talk about how to make the area more visible to drivers. We are grateful for the community partnerships like this that help teach our students about safety. Schools throughout the district recently celebrated International Walk to School Day. It was great to see so many smiling faces, students, families, staff, school mascots, and community leaders have such a fantastic time. Pictured on the screen are some photos from Carl Treger, from Emeline Cook, and Oaklawn Elementary. And you've heard me say it quite a bit, but the best part for my job is to be able to be in schools. So recently, been able to spend some time with students at South Park, along with some of our youngest learners in our early learning classrooms. So talking to staff and seeing students are a highlight of my school visits, especially when I get to go to the 4K rooms, and by the time I get halfway across the room, I've already had five hugs in the morning. So that's a really good day for me. So thank you for everybody who has been very accommodating in that. Also want to recognize our school board leadership. We had, want to recognize some of our own board members, many who recently attended the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Regional Meeting. During the meeting, Board President Barb Herzog was elected as our, to serve as our Region 7 representative, and Board Member Stephanie Carlin achieved Level 3 in the organization's member recognition program, which recognizes board members for their efforts in leadership and board development, as well as their involvement in various programs and events. So congratulations to both of you on a job well done. Grateful to have your engagement and leadership for our school board members in our district and region and throughout the state. So it was a great night up in Nina. Also, again, just a reminder that we want to continue to share our COVID-19 plan for 2022, 2023 can be found on the OESD website. And finally, just a list of a busy couple of weeks as we've got things up and running. So it's been great to be out and about the community. Right before this meeting, I was talking to a group of aspiring educators over at UW-Oshkosh, so it was great to be able to connect with them and hear where their heads are at and do a little bit of recruiting. So it was great. So thanks for everybody who's been very accommodating internally and then outside of the school district. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and thank you to our two high school reps. It's always great to have you here, and you're always welcome to participate in whatever we're discussing on the agenda, so we really appreciate having student voice in that way. Thank you so much. Moving on, then, we have district administrator supplemental reports, starting with Mr. James Fox on a referendum update.
Good evening. The progress at Vella Phillips is moving along quite quickly, as you might imagine, but inside the walls from, tucked away from the street, it's really moving at a rapid pace. We're completed in the last 30 days, has included the concrete topping slab for the academic tower, which, again, is a part of the three-story tower on the north side of the site that'll be used primarily for education, so 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. Roofing has been completed, most of Building Section C, which is above your cafeteria, and into Section D. We'll show you pictures of that, which is above Administration. Structural steel installation in the academic tower, as we'll show in a moment as well. Masonry installation continues on the second floor, interior, exterior walls, both for the academic tower and inside Section C, and really all over the entire site, the masons are spread. Building system HVAC, that's plumbing, electrical, excuse me, building systems, including HVAC, plumbing, and electrical are working primarily in Section C, but we're really starting to see the electrical push into the academic tower, again, moving quite quickly. And I'm happy to report that all footings for the project are complete, and they were finished with the last footing that was poured for the gym walls. So a couple of pictures to share with you, starting at the top left. Again, as, I think you've seen this picture a couple of times, but I think it has value as we progress through the project. It is a look from the second floor into the future cafeteria and to the second floor, first and second floor of D, which would be Administration. They actually started pouring concrete today on the second floor of that pandect. Middle top, pictures of studded walls. That also has changed, and I apologize for that. You know, the delay in time from putting the packet together to where we are today is amazing, what five days of work will do. Those walls are now insulated, and electrical is in there being sheet-rocked those walls. Lower left is a picture of the poured second floor, that's the topping slab that's over top of Spancrete. You can see the structural steel poking through it, which will help support the third floor. In the middle bottom, ductwork. In the back, you can see ductwork is hung. Duckwork has made significant progress. Most of Section C, that's your art room and your special ed, that's all fully ducted up to the mechanical penthouse, excuse me, on the roof. So they're moving quite quickly. And far right kind of gives you an example of how tight the quarters can be, is you get a lot of different trades, masons, electrical, HVAC, that's all working in a special ed, art room corridor as well.
Trust me, they will feel nice and spacious once the mess is cleaned up.
Absolutely.
Don't take the tightness as it's too small.
As we've said, the, that upper left is a picture of the pumping concrete on the second floor of the academic tower, that's your topping slab. Lower left picture and the middle picture are photos of the roof while they're installing is the middle one, and left, you can see a complete section next to the clear story, which is lower left, but the clear story is on your right-hand side of the picture. Top left is the exterior of the penthouse that is now foamed and ready for cladding. And then, bottom right is a picture of the nor, excuse me, south side of the cafeteria. On the far right will be your administration area and your secure entrance. That, too, has come quite a ways as the masons continue to move south. So what do we anticipate over the next 30 days? I'm sure most of you have seen as you've driven by, the Spancrete panels are being installed, actually, the precast wall panels have begun to be installed on Monday this week. We anticipate that being completed, at least the vertical precast wall panels will be complete by the end of next week. The entire gym, including the additional Spancrete piece, will be completed within 30 days. Concrete topping slabs will be poured in Section D, which I had shared that they began today, they'll finish tomorrow. Concrete slab will be poured, or Section D, that's the ground floor. Concrete slab will be poured, or Section D, that's the ground floor where administration will be located. Continuation, and this will likely repeat over the next couple of months, but continuation of building systems for the HVAC, plumbing, and electrical will continue as they push from Area C into the academic tower. Installation of steel studs in Building C and then pushing into Building A, which is your lower part of your academic tower. And then last is remaining roast sections. So we do have a little bit of roast section remaining in Section C, primarily over the clear story, and just a small section in D. So Myron is moving at a quick pace to try to get the building weather tight as we start to prepare for winter. Any questions on the progress to date?
And Mrs. Carlin?
Well, I have a question and a compliment. I was out of town for business for a month, and I drove by after not seeing it for a month and was shocked at the progress. It looks like it's just doing fantastic. And my question is, where are you in terms of timeline? Are you ahead, are you behind? How's it going with that?
Timeline, I would say we're right on track. We don't have any long lead time items that have shown themselves, so there is no concern about the timeline being jeopardized at this point.
Yeah, I think, just to touch on that, that timeline looks good. As you can start to see from the site progress, they are pushing very quickly to try to capitalize on the nice weather that we have left for this year. And so you're going to see a lot of rapid things occurring over the next several months because working outside in January, February is not exactly exciting.
Right. Well, it looks amazing. Congratulations.
We did have a question that came up in the listening session, and since we have Mr. Considine here with Bray Associates, and we also have Jim Fox here from our maintenance department. The question had to do with the precast wall panels and why were we putting up those as compared to 8-inch lock? So I'll just share that here so that people who are in the know on that question can provide the right answer.
Absolutely. So often bolt systems can be used from a cost comparative system. The precast wall panels are much more cost effective, much less labor intensive, and so it is a bit of a no-brainer when we can afford to do it inside of this construction schedule to do precast wall panels from a cost and time standpoint. To build this entire gym out of CMU walls would take, what are we talking about, put the gym walls up in roughly two weeks, to build that out of CMU would probably take well over a month. So obviously, labor being a big cost component there.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wright?
Are we staying within budget and then has anything had to be removed at all? Or is the plan still staying the same? I guess that's just my additional question to timeline.
Yeah, I can let Jim expand on the budget if he'd like. So far, the budget looks good, at least at this point in time. We did go through the early value engineering process. Since then, things have not been removed. So since the last time we talked, nothing additional has been removed.
All right. So we're on time and nothing's needed to be removed. Sounds good to me. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from student representatives or our board members? Dr. Davis?
No, I think the only thing would be, we're probably looking at December to invite board members out for a hard hat tour, to be able to get, be able to walk the space. We want to be able to button things up, but we also want to be able to, you know, have you see it firsthand, so the picture. So we'll be in touch with what dates work for that, but we'll be coordinating that soon.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update and everyone seemed happy with visual progress out there. Our next District Administrator Supplemental Report comes from Dr. Davis and is entitled Removal of Merrill School.
Yes, so there was, and this dates back to the original question related to the building of the current Bell Phillips School. Going back to that question on the ballot, it was stated that there would be the potential removal of the current building, meaning the Merrill K. School building, which I outlined as part of that report. And so certainly has been a lot of community interest related to saving a part of Merrill School as we've moved forward with the process. So I've had time to check in with some community members of interest. We heard from them certainly at the listening session earlier too, and talked about some potential options. So just outlined in this report, outlined some of those options that we have discussed, and I took that back to our team and to be able to again, provide as much perspective as possible. The recommendation still coming from the administration team is to continue to move forward with the removal of Merrill School, and again, primarily looking at green space and being able to provide, you know, the maximum green space we can for our students on that site. We don't want to reduce the footprint, the green space footprint of what the current building had, and as we put more students on that site. So that's really, from a value standpoint, I know there's multiple perspectives on this, but that's where our administrative team put the most value into, into this recommendation. So I just wanted to be able to, for the board, just outline what the options were that have been brought forward, and, and then recommending that the board, you know, discuss these tonight, provide any, any questions or follow-up, and then look at the potential of putting a resolution together at the end of this month to be able to give our staff just some direction in whatever that may be as we're, as we're moving forward. So I will say, the, the other conversation that I did not put in here related to the site would be the interest that our team has in looking at a historical monument or some memorializing the accomplishments and achievements of James Merrill, Harold Schumer, through the football field, was named after that Bell Phillips currently stands on, and in the Merrill School and the architecture of the Merrill School. So, so our interest is being able to, you know, work with community members related to some sort of memorial that we could do on green space that we would have on that site. And what I'll need from the board, and this would be at the, you know, if we get to a point where there's a recommended resolution, I would need a budget number from the board just to be able to give some direction related to the district's contribution towards that memorial. And if there is a desire for, you know, memorials that would be beyond what the, what the board approves, then we would, you know, work with community members related to fundraising and, you know, that type of thing. So we want to make sure that we're again, historically representing their accomplishments and memorializing that, and also making sure that our kids have adequate, adequate green space on that campus. So with that, I'll, any questions or discussion?
Mrs. Wyman?
I was at the community's event today where we got to learn about different spaces in Oshkosh and different people, and I visited the Merrill School kiosk, and I was surprised to see what Merrill School looked like when it was built versus what it looks like today. It was a drastic difference in the historic component of which it was built to the historic visual that it is today. You know, the original had the cupola and it had this and that, and, you know, a lot of interesting facets to it. I was just surprised. I, I thought that the original was the, what we're seeing today, and that doesn't seem to be the fact.
Obviously, this is a topic of great interest, and we've had a number of people who have provided input, providing different perspectives on this. I know there's been some questions about why are we looking to have a vote at the end of the month? I think one of the, one of the reasons for doing that is to bring closure to this topic so administration can plan appropriately with the students and staff and, and community in that region, rather than have this drag out for some period of time and, and have the uncertainty hanging over all of us. Sometimes I think that having a decision on something and moving ahead makes more sense rather than, and this is just my perspective, other board members may have another perspective, but I think it's sometimes helpful to, to, to bring something to closure rather than have that unknown out there for an under, undetermined amount of time. Mrs. Alaji?
And I would just like to say thank you to the administration and also the community members who have been a part of that conversation. I know when we made the wording potential removal as part of the referendum, the goal was that we would have a conversation about it. So I appreciate that, you know, we have done that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alaji. Anyone else?
I, I've enjoyed the discussion on it as well. I, I mean, I do wish that in the referendum, it wouldn't have been potential, you know, and we would have had it decided then. That would have been, that would have been, you know, I think, more clear for the community as a whole. But through facilities and finance, we've went through, or we've had this discussion a number of times, and, you know, it's a difficult decision. We're putting a lot of kids in a urban area. We don't have middle school tracks, but yet we have a portion of Merrill that's, you know, a really beautiful architectural piece. So going through the process and, you know, weighing the pros and cons, I, you know, I just want to say, you know, it's not a clear-cut thing where there's going to be winners or losers per se. You know what I mean? No matter what decision we make, there's going to be some portion of the community that, you know, isn't, isn't pleased with it. But hopefully, we can do the best that we can to, you know, weigh all those things and then move forward appropriately. So that's my thoughts at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone else? Mrs. Carlin?
I, I would just like to say that I appreciate Dr. Davis's comments about doing something to recognize the leaders that were involved in Merrill and putting together some sort of memorial and acknowledging their contributions to our community. This is a very difficult decision, and Ms. Wyman mentioned about that Merrill looks nothing like it did when it was originally built, and I can't remember how many additions it has, but I do think it has something like 39 roof patches because we were never able to update the roof at the same time because it was so big. And with that said, again, I echo what my other board members have said. I appreciate the community's input and I appreciate the process we went through, and I hope that we can find a way to recognize Merrill's history and impact that it had in, in our community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Davis, for your report and to your team for the consideration and time, energy, and effort that have gone into your report this evening. With that, we will move on to District Administrator Report Number 3, or Letter C, Update on Enrollment Numbers After the Third Friday Count with Dr. Gundlach.
Good evening. Just wanted to give you a quick update on our enrollment after the Third Friday count. People don't always realize that Wisconsin has two counts, one in September, one in January. This is the one from the Third Friday in September. The data in your package shows that we have declined 60 students between 21, 22, and the 22, 23 school year. It continues a pattern of gradual decline, the, which is marked by a fairly sharp decline that we had between 1920 and 2021, but that's, that's the pattern since that time. The good news is that on an open enrollment net loss standpoint, we actually moved nine students to the good. That is a net number between all of those who request to open enroll into the Oshkosh area school district and those who request to open enroll out of the Oshkosh area school district. So that's the data since 1617. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any question? Oh, Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, Mr. Carnes.
We saw a study last year, I think it was from UW-Madison from a few years back, that talked about the estimate of kind of where we would be numbers-wise. How does that play into, or have you, have you thought of that, you know, where we currently are at?
Yes, yes.
Because I think if I remember right, we were actually higher than we were projected.
We were, but if you look at the 4K-12 numbers, if, in that study, the study was done in 2018, and they, they broke it down in a whole bunch of different ways. They took a look at K-12, they broke it down elementary, they broke it down, they sliced it like 10 different ways. But what they also did is they did a kindergarten trend, a two-year rolling trend, a five-year rolling trend. Basically, if I were to summarize all of it, if you took out the change from 1920 to 2021, they'd be spot-on accurate. That dip, we did not necessarily recover from. So the, the, the slope of the line, the trajectory remains roughly the same. We continue to be a slightly declining district, with the exception of that one year. That year was a, was a fast drop.
Do we know, second part of that question is, is the incoming kindergarten class smaller than the outgoing senior class from last year? Like, does that make up that 60% difference?
No, actually, if, if you take a look, there is the, it's broken down there by school, and obviously that doesn't necessarily break it down by grade, we have that as well. But what you can see there, and there's two outlier numbers in that one, there's the 40% increase in Jefferson, well, that's because of the 100% decrease at Smith. You know, that's why those, so if you wipe those two numbers out, you can see, we do, we're a little up in some schools, but mainly we are down. And this next one shows that in actual real numbers. The, the difference here is, this graph is from the 2016 school year to 2023. It's over a span of those years. So that's just kind of taking a look long-term, and the red line is actually a trend line that we run to see. And I am by no means as good as UW Population Study Group, but this is my, this is my quick and dirty Excel attempt at trying to mirror their work. But you can see that we are, we are gradually declining to the tune of about probably, I won't even hazard a guess on the, on the numbers, but here, if you add all of these up, you'll see a net loss of 60. This is, now, this one is actually the change from 21, 22 to this year. This is a 12, a year-over-year change. Now, if there is a silver lining to being slightly declining enrollment, it's that we are declining right into the capacities of the newly consolidated buildings that we are building. So, so the information that Clint Sully from Bray used in helping us and the Facility Advisory Committee work through that process appears to be playing out before us.
The question?
Yeah.
When a family leaves the district, do we do an exit interview with them to find out the reason?
No, not that I'm aware of. We, we often get some anecdotal information as to where they're going. The biggest chunk of these, and Rachel Bauer and I talked a little bit about as we looked at each one of these, these reports, one thing that we're seeing, probably the biggest number that we're seeing as far as a decline mirrors the same numbers that other districts around us are seeing. And what it is, is we enter 100% of the kids who are born in Oshkosh when they're born. That's at age zero. What we're finding is we are not seeing them at age four. So sometime between when they're born and age four, they are no longer with us. That is the majority of the 500 students who have declined. That does not necessarily there means they're going to a surrounding district because the surrounding districts appear to be having the same exact issue. I have a hunch that it's an overall decline in, in the population of Wisconsin for young age people. That's a hunch. I have no scientific fact to back that up. I just know I had conversations with quite a few of our counterparts and they do seem to be declining, slightly like we are.
Mrs. Carlin?
Do you mind going back to the slide before that?
Sure.
Before that one too? Sorry.
Sure.
Okay, so the minus 237?
Yes.
Is that how many students we lost last year?
No, this is our current status. So this, this is a running total that we have in terms of open enrolled out versus open enrolled in. So we keep track of that every year to see how are we, how are we doing? So we are at a net loss of 237 kids due to open enrollment to a variety of districts. open enrollment to a variety of districts.
Got it. Okay, and the slide before that?
Yep.
So basically, we're still close to 10,000 students. So losing 200 students when our enrollment is that high, what's the percentage of that? I can't figure it out in my head.
Well, the, you mean, the, the net loss that we have? Yeah, if we, if we, if we actually broke even, our enrollment would go up from about 9148 to 93, 9400 kids.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to point out that when you look at our enrollments, and we're almost 10,000 students, and you, you lose a few here and there, that's not a high percentage of students that we're losing.
Correct.
Because we have close to 10,000 students. Well, not right now, but overall.
Yeah. I, I was more worried about this trend from 1718 to 2022, that can, really 2021, 20, from the 2021 to 2122 school year, it stayed relatively flat. But prior to that, we had three fairly steep years of, of going in the opposite direction.
And do you think any of that is related to the pandemic?
It could be. I think some of it is related also to the fact, I think we may have stabilized those last three years because now we offer a virtual option, too.
Right.
The biggest number of students that we lose is to a virtual school. And just so people know, we offer a, the same virtual school, we even use the same system, and we have better teachers. So that's just my own personal opinion. And, and so I think we've been able to offer our parents an alternative when they want a virtual option now, and we do that K-12. Before we did that, that was only a 912 option. So once again, silver lining of the pandemic is that it, it allowed us to clear out some barriers in creating a virtual option for our children from grade kindergarten through grade 12. And I think, I think that has something to do with the fact that how we've stabilized that loss.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I was just at a Wisconsin Association of School Board event Friday into Saturday, and it was noted that many school districts in the state of Wisconsin of the 421 are showing declines. So this is not unique to Oshkosh. And there wasn't really an explanation given as to what might explain that. It could be many variables, and it may vary from one district to the next. But there are many districts in the state of Wisconsin who are seeing a decline in school populations. That may have something to do with the decline in overall population. It might have a decline, might be related to the decline in the size of families, people choosing to have children or not have children. I mean, there could be many variables. But the point is that we are not alone in seeing a decline in enrollment. Mr. Wright?
I appreciate the datas, the data and the, the numbers. And really, my takeaway is, it's just a competitive environment now, education. I mean, families have choices, and if they don't feel like the best service is being provided, they'll exercise that choice. And, you know, a lot of people in the community talk, you know, on a regular basis, you know, to me about that, which, these numbers, every time I see them, you know, all they tell me is, well, they tell me a lot, but mainly it's just, we need to be, we need to strive to be good at everything we do. You know what I mean? If our facilities are really old and not attractive, we're going to lose kids. If our programming isn't good and isn't attractive, you know, we might lose kids. If our customer service isn't good, and we don't treat people the way they want to be treated, we might lose families and kids, you know, for all of those reasons. So that's why we, you know, as a district, we just have to continue to, you know, to do the best we can. So, and then hopefully, you know, as we do that, you know, then we gained, what, nine kids back from open enrollment this year?
Yes.
Nine kids? You know, then that number, they'll, they'll keep coming back, you know, based on the product we put out. So, thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else from the board or for the students? Comments, questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock. I appreciate your updating us.
Could you grab the sign off?
Oh, sir.
So our next agenda item is the non-agenda-related public forum. I don't have the document about reading the, the rules here, but I think I pretty much know what it is. Okay, so for the, for the agenda-related, we have no, no one signed up for non-agenda-related. We have seven people signed up for agenda-related public forum. We would ask that you come to the table where the microphone is, state your name and address, and if you are representing a group, please identify the group that you represent. You will have three minutes to share your, your comments. And we, we will go from there. Mr. Peschel would usually say we have 45 minutes in all, but since we have seven people and it's three minutes, that sounds around 21 minutes to me. We ask that you state clearly and concisely the matters of concern, and remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, we ask you to pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 so that you can be directed to the appropriate administrator. So with that, we will begin with Mr. Bill Christensen.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bill Christensen. I live at 1231 Jackson Street in Oshkosh. For a quarter of a century, from 1976 to 2002, 108 West New York Avenue was my home away from home. I was a fifth-grade teacher at Merrill Elementary School for 25 years. As I live a short distance from the school, I usually walk from my home down New York Avenue to Kentucky Street to the elementary school entrance. All three of our children began their educational journey in the Merrill School kindergarten and remember its warmth and beauty. I was always in awe of the unite, unique style and construction of the kindergarten and of the rest of the building. The only structures, in my estimation, in Oshkosh that come close to the unique beauty of the kindergarten and the historical part of the building are the pane, the public museum, Dempsey Hall at UWO, and our library. The character and quality of construction never failed to amaze me. My room was on the third floor of the 1901 portion of the building overlooking the ample green space between the building and street. The substantial construction of the structure was always evident to me. The building is solid and built like a fortress. Having lived in Germany for two and a half years, I've seen how fortresses are constructed. My question is, what is the rush? There are options other than destroying this beautiful building and 120 years of Oshkosh history. An option that has been suggested is to use the East Hall property for the track. I do understand there's an issue with students crossing Jackson to get to the track. About half the students in elementary and middle do this twice a day already, successfully, I might add. No one gets there without crossing streets. With the street and its, the track in its previous locations, students had to cross Kentucky Street to get there. Jackson Street has lights to facilitate the crossing. Kentucky did not. In my 25 years at Merrill Elementary, there were no incidents where students are struck by cars crossing streets during the school hours.
You have about a half a minute.
Students have managed to cross the streets to get to Merrill School for over 100 years. From my lofty position on the third floor, I was able to witness the crossings. Even five-year-old kindergarten students were able to navigate the crossing of New York Avenue. I do not suspect that the ability of students to cross streets has deteriorated in the last 20 years. The only time students will need to cross Jackson is during track season and when weather permits. We need to give middle school students more credit. They're not toddlers. They can get across the street by themselves. Please explore other options before destroying this classic masterpiece and its history. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Bill. I really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jean Erdman.
Hi, my name is Jean Erdman, and I live at 415 South Meadow Street. Thank you to the school board members for your service. You could be having fun instead.
We are.
I would find it nerve-wracking. I appreciate that. I vote, this is going to be very short. I vote to help elect people who, who will do what is best for children and youth. I do not support compromising physical education and intermural opportunities for Val Phillips' 800 students. I do support providing increased green space for the students and the neighbors of the Val Phillips School. If you can find a way for the community to continue to walk in the gym at Val Phillips, that would be a high priority with me. I think those community sharing kinds of things, maybe you can look at the schedule and do something innovative with that. I think that would be a nice community neighborhood connection. I encourage board members to consider your options and do what is best for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean? I take notes. A little slow here. Okay, next is Ellen Anderson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ellen Anderson, 1650 Arlington Drive, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I'm a hometown person. I've lived here all my life, attended Merrill's, did my siblings'. I'm not going to get into my background because three minutes goes by really quick. But I understand the challenges of putting together a building project of this size and the challenge of making value engineering choices, and, and which made each of you take a look at what was being included in Val Phillips' school and then scale back, weighing the needs versus the wants, still creating a terrific learning environment that would still be a nice facility, just not a Cadillac, I think is what I heard on one of the previous meetings, but a Chevy. And so in that process, there were some things that were dropped out of the building, including, if I understand correctly, some bleachers that would allow for a full assembly of the students, which I think is important. There was also some changes to the security entrance points because of lack of funding, and then, most importantly, that walking track, which would be used by the, the student population during the school year. The historic Save Merrill School group has come up with a plan, which we've provided and sent to administration, that would allow for saving a portion of the historic building at a cost savings, when you add in the ability to get a developer to pay us some money, of almost a million and a quarter. And so those funds could be utilized and put back into the budget to create some, some of those missing gaps in Val Phillips' school. And yet, I hear from Dr. Davis's report, I love green space, too, but I think 3.3 acres of green space is still, still a considerable. If you looked at the plan, it left you with some basketball courts, some soccer fields. There's quite a bit of space there. Most recently, I didn't see anything that said a definitive, they want to put a track on that site. I think some of that's due to a lack of funding. If you don't have funding for bleachers and security points, I don't think you have funding to put in a track. For a program that's very seldom used, I went back and looked at the Facebook posting of Merrill School, and they were 30 students at Merrill last year in the citywide track piece. So it's seldom used.
Excuse me, you have about 30 seconds.
Okay. So we need to be fiscally responsible, but still providing an excellent facility, and we could save Merrill and still give you some green space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Next, we have Tim Hess.
Thank you. Tim Hess, 2645 Templeton Place. Joe has handed out for you a comparison of the district's proposal versus our proposal. I want to talk about it a little bit. So on our side, we're proposing to knock down anything that was built past 1932. That would provide 3.4 acres to the north of that building. And in terms of programming, you see, we would still get the three basketball courts, we would still get the soccer field, the football field. All of that is still there. What we're asking you to consider is, what you would have to give up is utilizing a track for physical education for two months out of the year when it's warmer now. And I would suggest this, I know Dr. Davis doesn't like this, but it's not in any middle school FIAET curriculum. Track isn't there. And I'd also point out that this proposal does not require students to cross Jackson Street seven times a day, as has been asserted. I'd ask you to look at this. On the Val Phillips site, you see that purple triangle? That's where, or rectangle, sorry. That's where the gymnasium is, right? And that thing has been designed to be sufficient for seven months out of the year when it is cold and raining, like it was today, or snowing. That is big enough to handle all physical education and recreational activities for all the Val Phillips School kids. But what we're apparently saying is that for the two months out of the spring of the year, that getting 3.3 acres, which is 7.2 times the amount of space in that gymnasium, and even with that gymnasium being available to you, that somehow that isn't enough space. And to me, that doesn't make sense. So, yes, we are proposing to put the track over on East Hall Park, and that would require, that would require that for five weeks out of the year in the spring, students would have to cross one time a day with the assistance of the, the track coach, with a crossing guard to get over there and go to practice. But the Merrill Cross Country team already did it this fall, and the South Park Middle School kids, they go to South Park Middle School, or South Park to practice. So that precedent has already been done. If I use Bray Architects' numbers for the cost of demolition and site remediation, it would suggest that we could gain 962,000 by not knocking down that historical section. And then add to what a developer might pay you, you could come up with one and a quarter million dollars. And my proposal to you is, put that back into that indoor running track. That, in the grand scheme of things, to sacrifice an outdoor track for two months to get that indoor track for nine months?
About 30 seconds.
It seems like that's in the best interest of the students. So this morning, I was watching a video of the FAC 2.0, and what they suggested was, they were recommending combining the indoor aquatic center with the indoor athletic facility. That would take 15 acres. That wouldn't fit on East Hall Park. And so the question is, what are you doing with it? Put that track there, and please save Historic Merrill School.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Next, we have Gerald Jacklin.
Hello, everybody. My name is Gerald Jacklin. My address is 602 Washington Avenue. My talk is related to the demolition of Merrill School. I want to point out that the historical value of the older sections of Merrill School are important. The decision to save or destroy the 1901 and 1932 portions of Merrill would be much easier if it was not built so good and strong. Also, it's one of the best examples in the area, if not the state, of art deco design, architectural design. Over the years, we have lost prominent architectural structures in Oshkosh. Over the years, we have lost prominent architectural structures in Oshkosh. I understand that the younger generation and others are pleased with the building of the new Merrill's School, as they should be. People who are up in years, such as myself, maybe, that's a fact, may better understand the historical value of keeping the important landmarks and to preserve the history of the city. It is our hope that you will consider the other side of the story. That is, important history should be saved for future generations. Many Oshkosh folks will be disappointed if this historic school is torn down. It would be easier to understand the demolition of this building if you did not have access to the eight or so additional acres of East Hall Park. However, now that you have the additional space to work with, please consider utilizing this space and help us save Oshkosh history. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next is Shirley Bravender Maddox.
Good evening. Shirley Bravender Maddox, 1313 Jackson Street. I moved to Oshkosh 55 years ago to teach at the brand-new Perry Tipler Junior High School. I have taught music in 13 schools in Oshkosh, some of which no longer exist. One school, Longfellow, designed by William Waters, was sold by the school district for a parking lot. It's no longer a parking lot. But Longfellow School could have been repurposed and provided beautiful apartments in a neighborhood near the lake. It's too late. It's gone. Decisions are often made by decision-makers quickly and firmly, and no looking back. The Ether Hotel was knocked down almost 60 years ago. Later, people are still questioning that decision. Those decision-makers are long gone, but the voices of the community today still say it was not a wise decision. We have had a booth at the farmer's market for the last 10 weeks. In the beginning, people had no idea Merrill was going to be torn down. So, they wanted to show their support, so we had yard signs. Over 1,200 people have signed a petition. This was their opportunity to not only let the school district, but the city of Oshkosh, know that tearing down historic buildings in Oshkosh must stop. These historic buildings continue, contribute to our pride of place. We know Merrill's School is a 1932 Art Deco building designed by Henry Olver. The Wisconsin Historical Society states that it is eligible for the state and national register, not just because it's an old building, but it is historically significant for its architecture and its place in the history of education. To preserve and reuse buildings is sustainable. Kids get it. Merrill was built during the Depression by Oshkosh workers, using Oshkosh materials, providing jobs when unemployment was 30%, was over 30%. The proposal to save Historic Merrill has brought forth so many possibilities for reuse that it would be unconscionable at this time to be talking about knocking it down.
You have about 30 seconds, true.
Thanks. Be wise. Take time to really examine all the other possibilities. There's no need to rush a decision which years later may prove that today's decision-makers were unwise. Listen to the many voices who ask you to reconsider and save Historic Merrill School. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Shirley. And next is Joe Stevenson, I believe. I'm a former teacher, so I could usually decipher things pretty well.
All right. Hey, everyone. My name is Joe Stevenson. I live at 1010 Jefferson Street. First, I'd just like to thank everybody for being here, and I'd like, again, to thank you guys for your time. You guys donate your time to the community, and that's awesome. I like when community comes together like this. So, I want to talk to you guys about Merrill, as so many other people have today. I'm going to read from a script because I get a little long-winded, and I only have three minutes. So, while I believe Merrill is an example of, while I believe Merrill is an excellent example of Art Deco and a cultural landmark, my reasons for saving Merrill go beyond the historic interest of this building. First and foremost, demolishing Merrill represents a huge loss of opportunity. I've been in the city planning field for about 10 years now, and I don't see a lot of buildings like this. Schools are some of the best-built structures and easiest spaces to redevelop. Merrill could be used for anything, from a community space to housing, or a hybrid of the two. The historic portion of Merrill could benefit the surrounding community for another 100 years. Besides the loss of that opportunity, demolishing the building and putting a track on the space represents the most expensive option that we have on a project that's already over budget. Using your architect's demolition costs, we estimate the cost to demolish the building at about $1 million. It would seem to me that the fiscally responsible use of taxpayer dollars would be to sell the building for $300,000 to $400,000 and let the developer deal with demolition costs. There would still be 3.3 acres of green space left for recess, FIAID activities, and the historic portion of Merrill would bring new life to the neighborhood. I'd also like to point out that I did an assessment of surrounding area middle schools. This took a lot of time. I looked at middle schools from Fond du Lac up to Green Bay, and about 60% of those middle schools do not have a track, like, on-site. And of those middle schools that do have a track on-site, 30% of them are not regulation-size. So, you're looking at, in that I-41 corridor, about 75% of middle schools either don't have a track, or they're fitting a track to fit on a site. So, it's definitely not the majority of middle schools that have tracks. Again, I would like to implore the board to get out of groupthink, I see, among staff, and go with the fiscally responsible option to save Merrill. Thank you again for your time in taking this matter into consideration. Also, I'd like to note that if you ever want me to do, like, a population projection presentation, I'm certainly able to do that because Wisconsin is growing, and our student population should be too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Joe. All right, that ends the open forum for this evening. I want to thank all of you who took time to come and join us tonight. I know it can be somewhat daunting, sitting in front of a group such as this, and knowing that you're being recorded for posterity. Mr. Schultz, Schultz.
I was just wondering if I could speak a little bit on it, as a former student of Merrill? So-
Well, just to-
If I have time.
Yeah, we'll make an exception tonight. Normally, you have to sign up to do that, but you're part of this group, so if you want to comment, you can. And since this was an agenda item, I will allow you to do that. So, thank you.
Okay. I don't really have much to, I didn't prepare anything, but, like, just to offer a perspective, I would say that students also really value buildings like this in their community. I think it's a symbol of pride in their community. As a former member of Track and Cross Country at Merrill, I also value green space, but I also value historic buildings, and I think a track isn't as important as students would view preserving the school. I think, as I was in Cross Country and Track, we always found a way to make it work. I mean, we ran around, like, the edges of, like, the neighborhood. Like, I don't think, I don't think it's as much of a need as it seems, and I think there's a lot more students who view keeping this school, who see this as a bigger issue as well. But I appreciate that there's a discussion about it in general, because, I mean, it's important to a lot of people, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always good to have a student perspective.
Absolutely.
All right. Again, I thank everyone who took time to come tonight and to share. And you're certainly welcome to contact any board member, Dr. Davis, if you want to share further, either in written form or have a conversation. We're more than willing to do that. So, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. We have a workshop, review the Facilities Advisory Council 2.0 recommendations with Dr. Gunlock, Mr. Nihans, Mr. Fox, Clint Sell, and Nate Considine, from the last shooting, from Ray Architects.
All right. Well, good evening. We are following up from the last time that we were here. Tonight, we'll kind of go over, again, quickly, the review of the 2.0 recommendation, again, that we looked at last time. And then, really, our goal for this time is to start to talk about how the work from the 2.0 then fits into the overall master plan, and start to have some of those discussions. So, because it's probably been a little while since you've thought or seen some of those concepts, we're going to go over, again, what the master plan entailed, and then, again, just preliminarily start to talk, then again, about how the 2.0 might fit into that process. So, again, very quickly, this was, this is kind of a condensed view of the 2.0. For the purposes of visualization, I provided some of the project examples that we looked at at that time. So, if you recall, there were four projects that we considered, the indoor multipurpose facility, which included a full indoor turf field for soccer football, sized field, indoor fieldhouse, and then, training and locker rooms associated with it. There was a aquatic center, which included a 50-meter pool and diving area, as well as a spectator seating for that, therapy pool, splash pad, and the associated locker rooms with that. The Performing Arts Center, which is kind of the unique project up here, which identified site for, and by unique, I mean, we had, you know, a targeted site at North High School to be located there. So, again, an auditorium space with a full fly loft for Mr. Pitt, lobby, and accompanied dressing rooms for that space. And then, finally, the outdoor competition, a practice facility, which included a stadium for football and soccer, and then, baseball soccer fields, and some additional spaces. Miracle Field was, or a handicap-accessible amenity for that facility as well. Again, have all the associated cost breakdowns for those. Again, at the time, we did project those costs out to 2027, kind of thinking that would likely be the absolute soonest we would be able to potentially tackle any of these projects. So, again, in total construction cost, roughly $146 to $154 million. So, that was the FAC 2.0 process. So, again, kind of jumping back then to the FAC 1.0, it wasn't called that at the time, but I guess I'll give it the number, I'm not sure we are currently bringing that. This was the consolidation plan that we looked at at that time. Along the top-
I got it.
Okay. Along the top of that, the overall plan had a series of phases that we initially identified. So, Phase 1 was encapsulated within the blue line there, where we focused on the north side and a K-8 solution for the district there, which led to the Val Phillips project, as well as the new elementary at the Webster site. Shedding, and then, along the top, you can kind of see some of the other various phases that we associated. I'll talk about Phase 2 in a little bit. Phase 3 would be to potentially look at West High School and the future for that building. And then, Phase 4 was then finally addressing North High School. So, here's a list of the work that we had considered, or that we have done, or yet to do, at, during the Phase 1 of work. There was quite a bit of MEP and building capital improvement projects that Jim and his team led. As you can see there, touched quite a few buildings in the district. There was a number of roofing projects, the electrical projects at the two high schools. Again, but a fair amount of work there. Another component was the secure entry and safety projects that we did at a number of the schools, the four completed, and then, the four planned for summer of '23. And then, the two new buildings, the Val Phillips Middle School on the left, and then, some preliminary imagery of the new elementary school on the right. So, again, that encapsulates Phase 1 of the process. So, the question kind of is, is then, what does the next phase look like? And really, I kind of think of Phase 2 as very similar to Phase 1, in that, again, we're kind of addressing the west, although, we're addressing the west side of the district, and looking at the consolidating the three middle schools down to two, and then, consolidating our elementary schools from seven to five buildings.
And then, Clint, if you could, we could just hold right there. Again, just to reiterate Phase 3 and Phase 4, just because this graphic, I think, is a good space to do that. Again, Phase 3 preliminarily would be a demolition of West High, except for the Kimball Auditorium, and then, to be able to build a new West High in Phase 3. And then, Phase 4 was to, you know, remodel and refurbish North High School. So, again, kind of district-wide in that cadence. And as Dave has often said, you know, the farther you get into the phases, the broader the perspective is, and the lack of details at this point. So, this is more of a vision document, but just to make sure that we're looking through all four phases that are planned out, so. Go ahead.
So, again, kind of a preliminary look at the scope of work here. Again, on the middle school side, the idea is to replace or rebuild South Park Middle School. I think preliminarily, the plan would be to utilize the current site. And again, as Brian alluded to, as we develop this, we'll determine if parts of that existing building can be or should be reused. The other part of that for the middle school is Perry Tipler and kind of the future for that building. As of right now, we've identified that one of the uses it could be was professional development. And then, again, the district could look for some other ideas for how that building could be, continue to be reused, but it would no longer serve as a middle school facility. On the elementary side, the plan there would be to expand Oakwood, Trager, and Franklin, roughly to the same size that we are planning for the new elementary school at the Webster site. And then, right now, the plan would be to convert Shapiro to a 4K center to serve the district. And in this case, then Roosevelt would close and/or seek reuse and or sale. Again, just a very preliminary idea is that at November 2026 referendum, in terms of the alignment of, you know, future mill rates and debt relief in the future, that would likely be the earliest possible time that the district would consider. So, a ways out, but again, commending the district on continuing to consider the plan and think about the plan, and be in a really good place if and when the time is right to go forward. Again, looking at these potential projects in a very, kind of, let's say, conservative estimate perspective right now, again, projecting out to 2027. We mentioned November of '27 for a referendum. We're using 2027 for construction costs, because, again, when we pass the referendum, we're not going out to bid likely for almost another year for many of these projects. So, again, trying to be as considerate of that as we possibly can. So, again, for the projects projected here, roughly $137 to $144 million. So, the question then is, is how do the FAC 2.0 projects potentially fit into this? At this time, the initial thought is that the Performing Arts Center at North, for, I think, for a number of factors, one of them being North kind of being Phase 4, sort of the last one we're tackling, and that being one reason. I think another is, again, just the need of that facility and improving, it would be a big improvement to the North High School and, in fact, a lot of students there. High School and in fact, a lot of students there. So that is one of the reasons, as we preliminarily started to look at this, that one kind of rose to the top in terms of consideration as part of Phase 2. So if we kind of look then at that inclusion within here, that does bump us up to roughly $164 to $172 million. Again, we kind of left, the last time we met, with sort of these four bullet points. So again, bullet point one is kind of what we are bringing toward forward with you today is to look and see how this starts to fit in to the overall consolidation plan. Again, there's going to continue to be ongoing community engagement all throughout this process, continued financial planning. And then I think the main part of those FAC 2.0 projects that we talked heavily about is likely the need for some private public partnerships to be present to likely help kickstart those projects and get them going.
Great. And I guess just again, just to make sure that we're clear, like, the earliest that we would look at Phase 2 from a referendum standpoint would be November of 2026. So this is a really early conversation. Generally, we wouldn't be having these conversations this early, but the putting into context, the FAC 2.0 recommendations, we thought it was important to be able to put them within the context of what our other phases are to make sure that we're walking together. So that's the depth that we wanted to get to tonight as a follow-up to some of our summer conversations.
Questions or comments? Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, keep doing that. Mr. Carnes, I'm so sorry.
Would the Performing Arts Center at North then have the ability of fitting in with a new North if down into Phase 4?
Yeah, I think, again, preliminarily, as we've thought about Phase 4, I don't know that the idea is a new North. I think the idea would be a more of a like-new North.
Okay.
I think the, again, the bones of the building are in really good shape. So it's probably a massive renovation and likely some addition, but the discussions we've had to date wasn't that it would be a replacement of North. I think the goal for, again, for flexibility, we don't know, again, that might be in 2015, 2050. I'm guessing many of you might not be here. I hope to be retired at that moment myself. So, but I think the main
Seeing me by not here, not in the room.
Yes.
Retire. Still am I.
But I think, I think to that point, I think we need to be mindful when, if that project would move forward, that there is that flexibility that if that group at that time decided to replace North, we're not embedding it so much into that building that it would be impossible to divorce itself from it. So I think we would need to be mindful, much like Kimball was built, that it kind of can pull away from the existing building and be self-sufficient.
Okay.
And Mrs. Carlin?
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. Going back to Slide 4, where it talks about West High School, this is the first time that I've seen new construction. And as Dr. Davis said, with the exception of saving Alberta Kimball Auditorium. And I am so happy to hear that news because I have been saying for many, many years that I believe that West is a mistake, that we somehow ended up with a California school in Wisconsin. And there are rumors that there was actually a switch-up with the architecture. And somewhere in Florida, there's a high-pitched two-story building that's nice and warm, but we have seven courtyards in that building that we only use a couple months out of the year. They're expensive to maintain, and it's just not a appropriate school for Wisconsin. So I am so happy to hear Dr. Davis say that that is a potential possibility. And I don't think that we will hear a lot of community members saying, "Let's save Oshkosh West," because it is not an appropriate school for Wisconsin. So I am so happy to hear that. And I did have two questions also, and this is putting you on the spot, so I apologize. But do you happen to know how much we pay each year for using Titan Stadium and the YMCA for their pools? And I'm asking that because I do believe that investing in a football field or a stadium will save us a long money, a lot of money in the long run. And it makes sense for us to stop putting money into other facilities and have our own facilities.
I'm not sure what our current rate is with the university.
I know, I think it's six figures.
If it's fully utilized, Titan Stadium's in that $90,000 to $100,000 range
Mm-hmm.
annually, I don't believe we get charged at all for the swimming pool over at the Y. I believe they don't give that to us.
But that still is $100,000 that we spend every year that we could be investing in our own facilities. So again, I'm really happy to see that as a possibility as well. So this is exciting stuff, and I appreciate the transparency in saying that this might not happen until 2026. But I think it's important to put it out there in terms of being transparent. So thank you very much.
Mr. Wright, I got to correct that, too.
I mean, obviously, we're going to have a lot of discussions about this throughout the next, you know, years, and however longer any of us or whatever serve on this board. But, you know, we have old buildings, yes. But we also have to, in my opinion, you know, and I think we'll do this, strongly tie, you know, the financial picture of this, you know, alongside of the building piece picture, you know, so that we can understand what mill rates will look like. We can understand are we paying off some schools early, you know, to relieve that or to get rid of that debt, you know, and then possibly reinvesting, which I know we've done as a board. We've made some moves to pay off debt early and do some different things like that. But, you know, just making sure that that's tied into all this, I think, throughout the process is, you know, vital. And I'm sure it will be. But yeah, you know, it's awesome. A lot of money, too, you know, and it'll be a big, big discussion throughout the next few years. So, but thank you for getting it started. So.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone else? Mr. Carnes?
I'll go again, but Liz wanted to go first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I already spoke, so I'll let you go first.
I have a question, and this is actually pertinent to Phase 1 as we look to the new elementary school, about the 600 students at elementary level. I am always curious about the educational value of these buildings. I appreciate other school board members understand the finance part a little bit better. But the way we run our elementary schools now, the specialists, that like works, it's a sweet spot with our 450 students because there's the three specialists a day that students go to. So I'm just wondering what that educational piece with specialists will look like when those schools become 600 students.
You mean, what's a specialist schedule look like for a 600-student school?
Yeah, so like, right now, students rotate between art, music, and gym. And the way that it works is at a school with 450 kids, that works perfectly. There's a full-time gym teacher, full-time art teacher, full-time music teacher there. Their prep planning is built in. It just, it works really well at the 450 level. I'm sure it'll work really well at the 600 level, too. But I would just love to know what the plan is around that.
Well, and to clarify a bit, I believe the 600 included the 4K students in it as well, looking at that piece of it as well. So I might have double-checked that, but that is one other piece. The 450 is generally a three-track building, so three
Yeah.
classrooms per grade level. So 600 is more track.
Four track.
Yeah. So if we, I guess, and maybe we haven't had these conversations yet, but if we're moving to four tracks, are we looking to add a fourth specialist, you know, with someone who's going into school counseling? I would love for counseling to be a fourth one, but I don't know.
Yeah.
I just want to have a conversation around that, get that conversation started.
So a three-track school, the way we currently have specialist schedule, would yield one full-time
Mm-hmm.
teacher in each of the music, art, and physical education. And so then you would just take it out from there. So if you're looking at a five-track school, you're looking at between one and a half and one and three-quarters of specialist teachers in the building.
Okay. So yeah, that's what I wondered, if we'd still just have traveling teachers when we have the 600, how they'd share the space? I don't know.
It's possible. So we would have to see. But it depends on the number of, it depends on the number of tracks in the school and how we organize the schedule. The way we currently have it organized, a three-track school is a full-time specialist.
Yeah. Okay.
And so you might have, you know, somebody may end up traveling, but in the aggregate, once the consolidation plan is done, there's going to be a lot less traveling.
Yeah. And I think for the size of our community, a four-track elementary school, especially if we're building new schools, makes sense. I'm not actually trying to make it sound like I'm in favor of a three-track. It does make sense to have elementary schools that can fit four tracks at each grade level. I just have had questions about what that means for the specialists, so I wanted to bring that up.
And we'll be able to provide better definition of that as we roll through some of our Phase 1, you know, as we look at the new elementary school and be able to have those conversations. So we can keep you updated on that as we go.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Carnes?
So I'll go again. I think as we move forward with the facilities and the athletic complexes, I would just like to say, and I know a lot of you understand this already, but coming from someone who's grown up in Oshkosh, who went to Oshkosh West, who still has the exact same athletic facilities then that we do now, and my kids will be, one of them will be there next year. It's important not only to do this, I think, Ms. Wyman, I know you had made the comment a while back, not only how much is it going to cost to do it, but how much is it going to cost us now to do it? And that has stuck with me, and I think that's really important. But not only that, but this has to be right, and it has to be done appropriately. And I think that there are frustrations within the community when we see complexes that have been done recently that maybe haven't been done to the fullest. One of them is the Oshkosh West tennis courts, brand-new, is it last year, two years ago? A very small change to that seven-court system is putting in those little triangle inlets that between each court that keeps the balls from rolling all the way down. That is done at Menominee Park, it was done at South Park, but for whatever reason, at Oshkosh West, it wasn't done. That has been notorious, where you play tennis and the ball goes flying down a court, and you have a big, you know, event going on, that's distracting. So small things like that, that have bothered people, that got missed, that wouldn't have cost any more money to do, that would have been very easy to do. The track at West, obviously, this was done a while back, but we now find, now find out that it's, I didn't realize you can build tracks in different widths, how you make the shape. I thought it was the same, but it's not. And wasn't set up to be able to host a full soccer field inside of that. And we've had the conversation, we can find ways to be creative to do it. But just things like that, that weren't thought out or weren't done appropriately. And so I would just say, as we go through this, I want to make sure that we are not only having the meetings and talking to the right people, but the little, the little items there make a huge deal. And if we're going to put all this time and money into this, it needs to be right, and it needs to be done appropriately because this is going to stand for 50 to 100 years. And I don't want them to sit around and wonder, what the heck were we thinking when we did this because we missed those little things? So I appreciate all of that. That's my, you know, feeling that I've heard from the community as well as myself seeing some of this stuff. So I hope we can, you know, do this right. So.
Anyone else? Mrs. Carlin?
This is so stupid, but I just have to make one quick comment. When I said that nothing was worth saving at West, I just want to say that Andrew Schaller's Veterans Honor Wall, we would have to find a way to save that. So if there's ever a demolition, that is very important. So I just had to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a tremendous asset to our district and to our community
Mm-hmm.
as well as the school. Anyone else? Any of our students, either of our students have any comments you'd like to add? I would just like to make a few brief comments. Previous boards have had asked for a list of projects that were needed, particularly in the, in the physical education or athletic or recreation area. And to that end, we have, as a district, as a board, or previous boards, have authorized the updating of our two high school tracks. I was invited a few years ago to tour those tracks. They had big cracks in them. There were green things growing up through those, also known as plants or weeds. And I was told by some of our staff that there were schools from other districts that did not want to compete on those tracks. So from a safety perspective, we really needed to do something with that. Both high school tennis courts have been upgraded within the last 10 years. We have authorized recently the construction of a track, as well as a soccer field with bleachers and lights at Oshkosh North High School. There's talk about putting in turf at Oshkosh West High School. South, excuse me, the Alberta Kimball Auditorium has received a number of upgrades in recent years as well. Some of those are district dollars. Some of those have been a public-private partnership, namely through the Kimball family to upgrade that resource. I like the notion of a performing arts center at North. That is one of those areas at North. I'm not criticizing prior boards because I don't know the limitations that they were working under, but the auditorium does not seat that entire student body. And North musicals can't be held there. And my understanding is that the stage is not deep enough. There's not an orchestra pit. And I understand that when you have limited budgets, which we all do in school systems, we can't always build everything. So my point is, we have invested a lot of money over the last 10 years in our athletic fields, and that's been important. I also want to make sure that we give equal resources to our performing arts. We have had a tremendous history, we talk about history, of very successful art and music programs and drama programs in this school district, and I don't want to shortchange them. The Alberta Kimball, while it's had a lot of upgrades and the seating has been upgraded as part of that, it's seen a lot of wear and tear. It gets a lot of use. And having a facility on the north side of the river, I think, would make, would make a great deal of sense. So I'm not opposed to the FAC 2.0 review and the four major recommendations. I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging the arts as we look to upgrade facilities overall. And we've talked earlier this evening about wanting to, not only to be a destination district, but to make sure that our facilities are attractive to people who are considering moving into our community or staying into, staying in our community versus perhaps going to another district. So I really appreciate all the work that has gone into this by staff, as well as those community members who served on the Facilities Advisory Committee 2.0. I just want to make sure that we keep the arts in mind as we, as we move forward. Any other comments or questions?
That's a good point. Thank you for making that.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. And Mr. Sell, you had a long wait this evening, so we appreciate your time, as well as that of Mr. Consedine for joining us. Our next agenda item is election of officers. As was noted earlier, Mr. Peschel had stepped down from the board and thus as board president. Our board policies then call for the vice president to move up as president. And so that has taken place. And with the vacancy now in the office of the vice president, we will look to implement somewhat of a modification of what we did as a board in reorganization at the end of April, where we elected all four officers and then the board president appointed committee members. So the election of officers is the only vote that a board can take, paper and pencil, paper and pen or whatever. All other elections, all other votes by boards in open session must be done by a roll call, as we've witnessed many times this evening. So I would entertain a motion. First of all, would you like to vote with paper and pen, or would you like to vote in roll call?
I don't have a preference.
Anybody have a preference?
I've liked when we've done roll call in the last two years. I've done both as
I've done both as a board member.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, did I say roll call?
You did say roll call.
Sorry, I meant to say paper and pen.
How do the rest of you feel?
I don't have a strong preference, though. I'm okay.
I think I prefer paper.
Anyone else? Anyone opposed to paper? Anyone opposed to paper?
I'm okay with paper.
Make sure I'm reading your nonverbals there. Okay, so we will do paper for the election of the vice president. So, we would need a motion and a second. And there can be more than one nominee, and then we will vote with paper and pen.
Can I nominate somebody, then?
Nominations are now open.
I nominate Beth Wyman for vice president.
That's the motion. Please give the motion.
I second.
So your motion is to nominate Beth, and the second is?
For me, yeah.
First, Mr. Carnes, then Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mrs. Wyman has been nominated for the office of vice president with a motion and a second. Is there any, are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Christopher Carnes.
Is there a second?
Can I second myself?
You can.
Yes.
All right.
I'm not an expert on Robert's rules, but I believe it's possible to move one and second another in an election process. Although you can only vote once. Just to clarify.
Christopher, are you joking, or are you serious of that you're seconding?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Carlin, a second by Mr. Carnes, for Mr. Carnes as vice president. Are there any other nominations?
Do we have cards ready? Sorry, this is a technical question.
I believe Mrs. Fitzpatrick has paper ready for us.
I don't know.
She does. She does. She's always prepared. All right, so we have two nominees for the office of vice president. It's Mrs. Wyman and Mr. Carnes.
Okay, so this is what I have. I have the vice president, I have everybody's name, so should we just pass them out and then have everybody just check the board?
Yes.
Okey-dokey.
That sounds reasonable.
Get a big sheet.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Barb's not on the list, all right, circle Barb.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I did check.
I'm not on the list. I don't think it's possible to hold two off.
Smart enough to know what we're voting for.
I don't think it's likely either.
All right, so Mrs. Fitzpatrick will collect pen and ballots.
Emma?
We should have six.
It could be tied.
Mr. Carnes did not get two votes. Just to clarify.
Okay. We have one for Carnes. We have one for Wyman. We have another for Wyman. Another for Wyman. Another for Carnes. And another for Wyman. So we have four for Wyman and two for Carnes.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Mrs. Wyman, our next vice president. And she will hold that office until the end of April, as I will hold the president's role until the end of April. That has now created a vacancy in the role of, the officer role of the clerk. So we can now entertain a motion and a second for a new clerk for the board.
I make a motion to nominate Christopher Carnes as the new clerk.
I'll second.
Second. First, Mrs. Solaji moved and Mr. Wright seconded the nomination of Mr. Carnes. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for clerk? All right, since we said we were gonna do paper, I guess we should continue with that.
All right. Well, since there's no.
Can we just do a?
Well, they could abstain.
Well, since there's only one nomination, can we just?
You wanna do, we can do it that way.
We spell it.
We can do one one-way and one the next, okay? So we have a motion for Mr. Carnes as the next clerk, and we have a second for that. All those in favor of Mr. Carnes for the next clerk, please. No, we better do a roll call.
Yes. Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Purzon?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Carnes, you won. Yay!
Congratulations, Mr. Carnes. All right. Very good. Next, we move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with the background material on each item and has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately.
So move.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Wyman, second by Wright, to accept the consent agenda as written. Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Purzon?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Consent resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Then, we will move on to appoint board committees. We had, Mr. Peschel, in his role of president back in April, as per board policy, had appointed people to the various committees. I don't see any reason to upset all that and start from square one, so I would honor those nominations. These are not voted on, but are filled in basically by the board president. We also have board policies which limit the role of the board president to that of an ex-officio member of every committee that is a member of the committee because of the office. And we also noted that the president in that situation is a non-voting member. So in keeping with that new policy, I can no longer serve as a voting member of several committees, and so we need to replace my role there. I have spoken with Mrs. Carlin, and she would be willing to take my place on the Policy and Governance Committee. So we will do that. Facilities and Finance, I know Mrs. Wyman had served on that last year, and she would be willing to assume the chair of that committee. I noted in looking at this list of standing committees that Mr. Wright, Mrs. Carlin, and Mr. Carnes were the chairs of what I call the major committees, that is, those that meet every month, as compared to those that meet on a very irregular basis. And Mrs. Wyman was not chair of one of those main, major four, namely policy, facilities, education, and legislative. So Mrs. Wyman will take over as the chair of the Facilities and Finance Committee. I'm currently listed as a vice chair of the Administrator Compensation Committee. That's one that meets on an irregular basis. Is there someone who would like to move into my vice chair role on that one?
I don't think we meet before April, so I don't know that it's...
I don't know when.
I mean, we can certainly hold off until after.
That's fine. Okay. Education Committee would stay the same with Mr. Carnes, Mrs. Carlin, and Mrs. Solaji, Legislative Committee. Someone needs to replace me on that committee. How about Mr. Wright?
I'm full.
You're full.
You got policy and facilities.
Well, that's true. You've been requested, though, by one of our lawmakers to be part of that.
That's not surprising.
That is, that is true.
I just heard that Mr. Trah asked you to come to lunch, so.
Okay. I can, I can do it.
That is a lot, though, to be on three of the committees that meet every month.
Yeah.
Well, may I offer some insight?
Sure.
The only reason that I'm looking to, that's my favorite committee, and I would like to still be on it, that it meets on Thursdays, which I'm often on-call on Thursdays. And we've had the same problem with Education Committee, another one of my favorite committees, but I haven't been able to make the meetings, 'cause I'm often at work on Thursdays. So, it's either change it or change the day, which we were talking about doing in maybe six months, when I have a little bit more, or three months, when I have a little bit more flexibility in my new job. So, it might just be a temporary appointment until I can make the meetings.
I can do it, it's fine.
Can we offer them temporary and tweak it when the new board member comes in? Because that person could take a few of these.
That's a good idea.
We could, but in the meantime, that's, we have to fill that position within 60 days of the resignation of Mr. Peschel, which puts it right before Thanksgiving. So if that group would meet before Thanksgiving and one board member can't attend, then they can't meet.
I'm just saying, we could temporarily fill it.
Temporarily, right.
Mr. Wright said he could do it.
So someone might be magnanimous and decide that they give that seat up to the new board member, sure.
Yeah. Basically, we just need to make sure that we've got our committees filled for the next month, to make sure that we're not missing that kid, so.
And we can have quorums, too.
Correct. All right, Mr. Wright, we'll.
I can do it.
We'll accept your.
Temporary.
Willingness to fill in, at least until we get the new board member appointed. Thank you very much.
No, for sure.
And thank you to the rest of you for agreeing to fill in, so that we have full committees.
I need some questions. May I ask a point of clarification? I'm under the understanding that we're trying to replace your seat, but Stephanie just now started talking about how you can't make the meetings for the city. So are we replacing you as well right now?
No, I'm looking for a backup. I still wanna remain on the committee, but I don't wanna run into a situation where we don't have a quorum if I can't make it.
Got it. Just wanted to be clear.
Thank you so much.
And these committee meeting times are not chiseled in stone. So if we have someone new on the committee and they would need to have the time or the day of the week tweaked, that can certainly be done. Then, turning to the second page of the reorganization meeting results of April 25th, I would, I couldn't stay on it, bless you, as the CISA rep. Tiff Districts, that's usually been the president and vice president, so if Mrs. Wyman is willing to do that, we could add her name to that list. They don't meet very often, and it's usually in the morning. We would retain Mrs. Carlin as their WASB delegate assembly rep. The City Planning Commission, that's, again, is typically the board president and vice president, so if Mrs. Wyman is willing to stay on there, I think we can just use the two names there. Board president responsibility is either dictated by board policy or, in the case of the museum board, I believe that's a city ordinance. So I will fill in, or continue to cover, I should say, the museum board. Fox Valley Tech College Board of Directors typically meets once in the spring. Community Sounding Board typically meets maybe quarterly.
Yeah.
And we had also listed at that time, Oshkosh for Education, but I'm not sure that they're.
Not right now.
Viable right now, so we're good. I was not on any of the meet-and-confer liaison teams, so those can stay as noted. Any questions or comments? Okay. I don't wanna prolong our meeting here. We've been here about our typical amount of time. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
No.
Okay, if you think of anything, you can let us know. Announcements, any announcements? On some future agenda item, we probably should revisit the decisions we made when Patty Vicman was here from WASB as to two things we agreed to relative to engagement. So perhaps we'll make that a future agenda item.
It's a great idea.
And then I just wanna take a quick opportunity to acknowledge all the students who have participated in fall sports, their parents, their families who have supported them throughout the sports season as the winter sports season is gearing up. And I was looking at my district calendar recently and saw just a multitude of music performances coming up. So I encourage board members and members of the community to support our music students in their endeavors, whether it's orchestra, band, choir, elementary concerts, as well as plays. Mr. Owen had pointed out that North has a play coming up. So we'll look forward to that. Are there any other announcements? Mr. Carnes?
I just, one comment. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about December as a walk-through for the board members at Vell Phillips. I don't know how everyone else feels about this, not to discuss it now, but to say that maybe there's an opportunity to, just like the groundbreaking, to maybe invite some of the old board members who are able to put us in this position.
Great idea.
I walked right by that building, I just, I think of a lot of those decisions that were made before me, and I think it'd be nice to maybe honor them a little bit with that.
Good idea. Excellent idea.
And maybe the neighborhood as well. Very good. Any other announcements? All right, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Carlin, Mr. Wright, please call the roll.
Purzon?
Here, I mean, I, yes.
Carnes?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
No, we don't have.
Yeah, I'm late. No, they can't take that away.
Congratulations.